Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectment's meeting for May 28, 2015. First item on the agenda, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Old business, June election. Absentee ballots are out. The election is on June 9th from 8:00 to 8:00. And annual town meeting, the town hall will be closed. That's a normal Saturday that we're open, but will be closed because of the town meeting on June 13th, starting at 9:00 o'clock at the Acton School. New business, open the sand and salt bids. What we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna open the bids and get the figures, and the highest figure is what we're going to use as a figure on the warrant for the town meeting. We will not be accepting any bids because we don't have the town's approval to do this yet, and after the town makes their decision on whether or not they want to do the building this year, then we will determine who will be awarded the bid. All right. This first one is from Barry Huff McDonald Milligan Incorporated Engineers and Surveyors from 28 State Street in Gorham, Maine. I won't read about all their history, description of firms, their experience. We'll go through all this after when we have a committee and if the town decides to go ahead with this. Okay, we got request proposal. More about their experience, they listed all the salt sheds that they built. Okay. Scope of services and fee proposal. They got $30,000 for the engineering. I hope they sent us pretty, okay, $30,000 for the engineering. No, these are just all copies of the same thing. I hope they have building in here because we want it turnkey. Okay, all I'm seeing on this one is $30,000 for engineering. I don't see anything about the actual building of the building. So we'll hold off looking further into that. Okay, this is Langford and Low Incorporated General Contractors Construction Managers and Lincoln Haney Engineering Associates Design Consultants. Eight budget estimates and fees. Okay. Total cost, $672,794.
Sorry, yeah?
That's $63.71 a square foot. Can you put that with that envelope?
Yep.
Okay, quotation. Total structure price delivered and installed, $336,322.
Three three six two three.
No, three three. Three three six, three two two.
Anything on engineering or anything in that?
This price includes a complete steel frame building. The steel is hot dipped, Rupp blocks, added ground anchors to meet the load requirements, and the protective coating of the interior berm while.
Actually, it is an engineered building anyway, so.
Yeah, it is, and they're actually the ones that sent the engineer that allowed us to keep the building going with those tarps up there, so they're familiar with the site. All right, that's Rupp. I thought Rupp had given us gifts, but it was just a color code of what color the top of the building would be.
I thought it was a keychain.
TPD Construction Company. Design Bill Proposal. Repropose the budget amount for the above described work to be $509,000, $509,000 and no cents. Oh, yeah, put that back in that box. Need a motion on what we want to do about the number on the warrant. If we make a motion and discuss it.
What were we thinking about initially?
Well, we have $500,000, up to $500,000 on the warrant right now, and we were thinking, well, let's make a motion first.
Make a motion for what?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. What do we want to make for a dollar amount?
Or do you want to table it?
We're at 336 and 509 and 672. I think the 672, we probably can not quite go that high. So.
Well, the difference between the other two is quite a bit of difference.
It is.
And we can't get into, you know, what they're building or whether it's what we want right now.
Right, right.
And I also want to look in further into the first one to see if they actually read the wrong and do have a building.
Quoted this one building instead of two?
Yeah, well, all they quoted was $30,000.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the very first one, yeah.
Yeah, we're not having that time to look over the whole proposal. So we need a recommendation of a motion. We can always vote the motion down. We need a motion to recommend what should be on the warrant. We can, after we discuss it, we can vote it down.
We have to discuss it.
Yeah, so let's just make a motion, second it, and then we'll discuss it.
You want to make the motion?
Sure. I'll go with the warrant out with what we talked about. I'll make a motion, we approve up to $500,000.
Second. Second.
I agree, I think we leave it at $500,000, and we have one bid under, we have one at 509, and we don't know about that first one, whether they included, because there's so much paperwork there, and it just seems like it's four copies of the same thing, but I think it's just engineering.
Yeah.
Worst case, we know we're in the ballpark, so we can always go back out to bid again once people know, you know, once the town votes and they know what we have for a budget, that 509 could come down, and they would be an option. The Rupp, we don't know whether we want that or not, that could still be an option.
Right.
So.
I agree.
Okay. Bill, you got anything?
Pardon?
Do you want to add anything, or?
No, 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 fine.
So, are we ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor of leaving the warrant article, asking the town up to $500,000? All in favor? Little Red Schoolhouse Petition. Okay, Acton Planning Board Minutes. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to, oh, we have to do this afterwards, right? A motion on what we want to do about the Little Red Schoolhouse? Whether we want it on the warrant or not?
I'll make a motion that we do not put it on the warrant.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. The planning board voted on this on May 21st. The proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to historical structure. The chairman noted that the attorneys have expressed the opinion that the citizen's proposed amendment is not in compliance with the Town of Acton's comprehensive plan. The response from MMA supports that opinion. Mr. Smith stated that though he agrees with the citizen's right to petition, based on the opinions of three sources, he moves that the planning board members recommend that the proposed amendment is not moved forward. Ms. Gallagher seconded the motion. The chairman declared that Mr. Cashin will refrain from voting on this motion, therefore Mrs. Smith as alternate will vote. The motion passed unanimously. Okay, any other discussion?
No, I mean, I feel bad for the owner of the building, but Main Municipal Association has come back and said that it should not go forward. Two of our attorneys have come back and said it should not go forward. Our planning board has said it should not go forward. Once again, I do feel for the owner, but, I mean, we have to uphold the rules and regulations that we have for the Town of Acton, and that's one of the hard jobs that we have.
Okay, Bill?
No, no comment.
Okay. All in favor of the Little Red Schoolhouse petition not going on the warrant? Warrant and finance resignations. We have two resignations from the Warren and Finance Committee. One is from Dick Neal. To all, I wish to inform everybody that my immediate resignation from the Warren and Finance Committee. I was hoping to be able to help and contribute in a positive way, but it just seems that there are always more questions than answers, and we just keep spinning our wheels and not getting things done in a positive way. I will not be attending the meeting this evening, distress is not worth it. Signed, Dick Neal. A motion on Mr. Neal's resignation.
I move that we accept his resignation.
Seconded.
All in favor? To the Acton Board of Selectmen, I wish to inform you of my resignation from the Warren and Finance Committee as of this date, 5/19/15. I will be having a knee replacement on May 26th and will be healing for some time. Signed, Principal Mark Lowell. A motion on Mr. Lowell's resignation.
I move that we accept Mr. Lowell's resignation.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, now we go to the warrant. Recommendations on the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Excuse one second. Any thoughts about taking the liquor license hearing next? Because we're gonna be quite a while going through the warrant.
Um, yeah, because the warrant has to go back in to be fixed before we can sign it, that's why we have the liquor license.
True, yep, I forgot that fact.
All right.
Disregard.
Town of Acton Warrant to Robert Anderson, a citizen in the Town of Acton, York SS. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said Town of Acton qualified to vote in the town affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on June 9th, 2015, at 8:00 in the morning to act on the following articles to wit. Article one, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Article two, to elect by secret ballot one selectman, assessor, and overseer of the poor for three years. One road commissioner, District Two, for three years, and two members of the school committee for three years. Article three, all we're gonna be able to do on Article three, four, three, four, five, and six is to vote on them. We can't have any discussion on them because the absentee ballots are out already and the town hall is open right now, so all we can do is make our recommendation on these articles. Article three, shall the following amendment to the definition of Resource Protection District in the Town of Acton zoning ordinance proposed by the Board of Selectmen on 3/12/2015 be 4.2.2.4 Wetlands of two or more continuous acres in the Shoreland District and the associated buffer which shall be calculated as follows, using a multiplier of 25, 25 feet times the acreage of the wetland, not to exceed a 250-foot buffer. Board of Selectmen recommends a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article four, shall the following amendment to the Town of Acton zoning ordinance proposed by the Board of Selectmen on 3/12/2015 be enacted? Special exceptions. The planning board may approve a conditional use permit for a single-family residential structure and any accessory structures in the Resource Protection District provided that the applicant demonstrates that all of the following conditions are met. There is no location on the property other than a location within the Resource Protection District where the structure can be built. The lot in which the structure is proposed was established and recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds before the adoption of the Resource Protection District, 9/29/2011. All proposed building, sewage disposal systems, and other improvements are located on natural ground slopes of less than 20% and located outside of 75 feet horizontal distance of a stream or upland edge of a wetland. The total ground floor area of the principal and accessory structures within the Resource Protection Buffer is limited to a maximum of 1,500 square feet. The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Make a motion, we adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article five, shall the following amendment to the Town of Acton zoning ordinance proposed by the planning board on 1/15/2015 be enacted? Special exceptions. The planning board may approve a conditional use permit for a single-family residential structure and any accessory structures in the Resource Protection District outside of the Shoreland Zone, provided that the applicant demonstrates that all of the following conditions are met. There is no location on the property other than a location within the Resource Protection District where the structure can be built. The lot in which the structure is proposed was established and recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds before the adoption of Resource Protection District, 9/29/2011. All proposed building, sewage disposal systems, and other improvements are, one, located on natural ground slopes of less than 20%, and, two, located outside of a 75-feet horizontal distance of a stream or upland edge of a wetland. The total ground floor area of all principal and accessory structures within the Resource Protection Buffer is limited to a maximum of 1,500 square feet. Board of Selectmen recommends.
I'd recommend that we ought not to pass.
Second.
All in favor? Article six, shall the town vote to accept the transfer of all assets of the Acton Ambulance Association in the town and provide ambulance services with firefighting services under one municipal department, subject to a 2015-2016 budget being appropriated at town meeting on June 13th of 2015? Board of Selectmen recommends.
Recommend we opt the article, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article seven, to choose three members of the Warren and Finance Committee for a two-year term. Tom Cashin resigned, whoops, I'm sorry. Tom Cashin, Robert Gore, and Holly Mooney's terms have expired. To choose one member for a one-year term, Richard, nope, one-year term, and to choose two alternate members for a two-year term. William Williams' term has expired. Article eight, to see if the Town of Acton will vote to disband and discontinue the standing town road committee previously established by town meeting vote of June 15, 2002. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Article nine, to choose three members of the town road committee for a two-year term. Cindy Hart, Dave Langley, and Richard Neal's terms have expired. Note, if Article eight passes, table this article indefinitely. If we pass Article eight to disband, then we will not be voting on Article nine. If we do not pass Article eight, then Article nine will be the normal election that we have every year. There is no recommendation by the Board of Selectmen on Article nine. Article 10, to choose two members of the town forest committee for a three-year term. Wesley Ham and Mark Hertz terms have expired. Article 11, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to appropriate and expend monies from the undesignated fund balance for the purchase of equipment or to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur during the fiscal year 2016. Maximum expenditure, $15,000. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Article 12, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to reimburse the members of the Acton Fire and Rescue for any national disaster or state of emergency or other emergency situation that exceeds eight hours in duration at the same rates as established by Article 33, to be assigned at the fire chief's discretion. Firefighters or rescue members, same as laborers, fire chief, same as road commissioner, funds to come from the undesignated fund balance in the event it is not declared event or money is not available in the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund. Selectmen recommend?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of surplus town-owned equipment having a value of less than or equal to $500 on such terms and conditions as they deem advisable, and to execute any necessary documents to accomplish said purpose. All equipment having a value of more than $500 shall be put out to bid. Funds received from such sales shall be placed in a capital reserve account for the associated department. Excuse me. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 14, to see if the town will vote to put the funds received from the sale of tax-acquired property during the year 2015-2016 into the Capital Improvement Fund. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 15, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell any tax-acquired property and issue a quick claim deed for the same. Sale to be by sealed bids or public auction if to other than the owner of record at the time of foreclosure. And no selectman during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town on account of non-payment of taxes unless the owner of record at the time of foreclosure was the selectman or the son, daughter, spouse, or parent of the selectman. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen upon request of the treasurer to allow the treasurer to waive foreclosure of a tax lien on a specified property for a specified year with reference to the tax lien certificate recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds in circumstances where the Board of Selectmen determine the foreclosure may encumber the town. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 17, to see if the town will vote to have real estate and personal property taxes first payment come due on October 15, 2015, and the second payment on April 15, 2016. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 18, to see what interest the town will vote to charge on all taxes after October 15, 2015, and April 15, 2016. Maximum rate of interest allowed is 7% per annum. Board of Selectmen recommends?
7% per annum.
All in favor?
Second.
Whoops, sorry. All in favor? Article 19, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at 3% pursuant to 36 MRSA 506-A. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend 3% per annum.
Second.
All in favor? Article 20, to see if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector to accept the prepayment of taxes before tax commitment. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 21, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make application for and execute any documents related to any grant or donation to accept any such grants or donations or any fees inappropriate such funds for their designated use, so long as they do not require matching funds or encumber the town in any way. The treasurer shall be notified of any grant applications, and a copy shall be kept on file in the treasurer's office. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 22, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all the funds received from the state from snowmobile registration revenues to local snowmobile clubs for maintaining their snowmobile trails, on condition that those trails are to be open to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 23, to see if the town will vote to appropriate revenues received from MEMA, FEMA, claims during the fiscal year in the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund. Said funds are to be utilized at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen during a declared event. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer all revenues received from the state of Maine for the local road assistance program, LRAP, formerly known as Europe, to the Road Capital Improvement Fund. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $738,348 for General Government Department 102 to be expended as follows. Governing body, $29,389. Town gym, $4,550. Office assistants, $55,223. Warren and Finance Committee, $266. Municipal management, $407,559. Elections, $6,883. Planning Board Committee, $4,100. Finance Treasury Department, $38,719. Town clerk tax collector department, $45,777. And the code enforcement department, $99,912. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $8,108 for Health and Welfare, Department 103. This includes 108 for the health officer stipend and 8,000 for general assistance. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $170,826 for Public Safety Department 104 to be expended as follows. Fire department, $130,557. Streetlights, $1,700. Animal control, $9,287. Communications, $27,989. EMA director, $1,293. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend, adopt the article as written.
Second.
All in favor? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $457,606 for operation and wages and benefits for the ambulance department, 104.05, to be expended as follows. Operations, $48,040. Wages and benefits, $409,500. Wages and benefits, $409,566. Note, if Article six fails, this article shall be postponed indefinitely. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Raise and appropriate $337,334. The breakdown is operations, $48,040. Wages and benefits, $289,294.
Sire.
All in favor? Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all monies received from the Acton Ambulance Association into a capital reserve account to be known as the Ambulance Reserve Fund for the future ambulance purchase. Note, if Article six fails, table this article indefinitely. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,800 to create an equipment expense reserve for the fire department, Department 104-03. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $30,000 to add to the fire department capital improvement fund toward the future purchase of a new fire truck. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? To see if the town will vote to allow the treasurer to execute a bond in the town of Acton's name in the amount of up to $500,000 for a 10-year term with an interest rate of up to four percent, and appropriate said funds for the purpose of building a new sand-salt building at 836 Sandborne Road, and to raise and appropriate up to $60,748 for the payments on said loan through June 30, 2016. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Treasurer's financial statement?
You don't have to read that.
Okay. Alrighty. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of public ways according to the following schedule.
The only change from the previous three years is the inclusion of a ten-wheeler rate, if you want.
Oh, okay. All right, so the ten-wheeler is sixty, an addition of a new vehicle is coming in under general equipment at a rate of $64 per hour. Okay, the above rates are based on fuel prices, up to and including $4.30 per gallon. The town of Acton will pay an additional dollar an hour for each 25-cent increase per gallon for equipment utilizing diesel fuel. This will be based on the fuel prices at Booney's and Chapley on each Sunday. Such price will determine the fuel allowance for the following week's warrant. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $457,421 for Public Works, Department 105, to be expended as follows. 105-10, District 1 Winter Maintenance, $76,530. 105-12, District 1 Summer Maintenance, I'm sorry, that was Winter Maintenance. 105-12, District 1 Summer Maintenance, $84,470. District 2 Winter Maintenance, $76,530. District 2 Summer Maintenance, $84,470. Stockpile sand-salt account, $120,383. Public Works Building and Equipment, 105-32, $15,038. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise $130,220 and appropriate $180,000 for road surfacing and reconstruction. Funds to be expended as follows. 105-14, District 1 Surfacing, $90,000. 105-24, District 2 Surfacing, $90,000. The remaining balance of $49,780 is to come from the Road Capital Improvement Fund, local road assistance program funds received. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $268,158 for the transfer station Public Works, Department 105-40. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise $10,800 and appropriate up to $12,400 for operation of the Recreation Department, Department 11301. The remaining balance is to come from fees, donations, and revenues received by the Recreation Department. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $250 for the Conservation Committee, Department 106-01. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate up to $300,000 for county tax, Department 108-51. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Article forty.
Vote.
Oops, I'm sorry. All in favor? All right. Article forty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $538 for planning and development to be expended as Forester's stipend, Department 107-05. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,750 for cemetery maintenance, placement of flags, markers, and repair of veterans' graves, Department 109-01. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $65,163 for donations, Department 109-20 as requested. Acton Food Pantry, $2,500. Acton Public Library, $18,840. Acton Chapley Historical Society, $1,000. Acton Chapley YCC, $22,000. Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, $6,150. American Red Cross, $1,000. Bolsh Lake Improvement Association, $5,000. Caring Unlimited, $656. CSI Maine Behavioral Health, $515. JELIA, $2,060. Home Health VN, Visiting Nurses, $1,000. Kids Free to Grow, Child Abuse, $400. Saco River Corridor Commission, $300. Sexual Assault Response Services, $258. Southern Maine Agency on Aging, $1,545. Woodford's Family Services, $100. York County Community Action, $1,339. York County Shelter, $500, for a total of $65,163. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $612 for the Life Flight Foundation Incorporated, Department 109-20. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
Discussion. This is a new charity this year. Life Flight has been used in Acton, unfortunately, several times recently, and this is the first time that they have requested funds. All in favor? Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,000 for the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery Association, Department 109-20. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
Discussion. Again, this is a new request for the first time from the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery Association. All in favor? Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise $9,925 and appropriate $12,425 for dams. The remaining $2,500 will be expensed from the Dam Capital Improvement Fund, Department 109-50. Milesom Watershed Dam Coalition Annual Maintenance, $4,400. Milesom Watershed Dam Coalition 2015 Capital Improvements, $2,500. Dam Capital Improvement Fund, $5,000. Bolsh Lake Dam Operator Stipend, $525. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-six, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $39,900 for the operation of Acton Public Access TV, also known as APAT, Department 111-10. All revenues and current fund balances will now lapse into the general fund. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
Discussion. Last year, APAT became a town department. We didn't realize in the past that the money that we get from Metrocast could be used for anything other than the APAT channel. So now we have a budget that comes in. In the past several years, it's been about $42,000 that we get from APAT. That has, we have to fund the APAT first, and then the extra money, if there is any extra money, can be used to go in towards taxes. All in favor? Article forty-seven, to see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated to the designated department for the ensuing year. Acton Tree Lighting Donation Fund, Ambulance Reserve Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Cemetery Fund, Conservation Committee, Dams Capital Improvement Fund, District 1 and 2 Road Surfacing and Reconstruction, District 1 and 2 Summer Maintenance, Recreation Capital Improvement Funds, FEMA Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund, Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund, Fire Departments Grants, Donations, Scholarships, Forestry Committee, Fuel Assistance Donations, Gravel Processing, Gym Donations, Mary Grant Committee, Neighbors Helping Neighbors Donations, Road Capital Improvement Fund. All other unexpended fund balances and revenues to lapse into the Undesignated Fund. Lapse school balances to be designated for school funding only. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $11,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund for additional siding to the town hall. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. We adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article forty-nine, to see if the town will vote to accept any and all funds received from the state of Maine and the federal government and appropriate any designated revenues received to their designated use. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? Article fifty, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit, $1,277,317, established for the town of Acton by Maine State Law, LD1, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
Discussion. This is the first time this article has been in under the town. The school has it in every year. The state tells us or recommends what a town should increase taxes for every year. This year, because of the $500,000 for the salt and sand shed and the whatever amount is decided on for the ambulance, will make us, the amount of taxes that we're going to levy be higher than what the state recommends. So that's why this is in there this year. Okay. All in favor? Article fifty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation. Fiscal year 2015-2016, municipal revenues, $589,000, up to $589,000. Municipal Undesignated Fund Balance, $200,000. School Undesignated Fund Balance, $110,000. Board of Selectmen recommends?
Recommend. Adopt the article as written.
Sire.
All in favor? That's done. Okay. Liquor license hearing, a motion to go into public hearing.
I move we go into public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, we're in public hearing for the liquor license.
Will we tell Eric's ready?
Oh. Also? Okay, we're in public hearing for the liquor license for the potting shed, location 1060 Route 109. This is a renewal for the potting shed. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to come up and talk about with us? No? Okay. We have a report from the sheriff's department, nothing serious. Some disturbances, lot of alarms, building area checked. Suspicious activity. An assault, but that was in the past, it was investigated.
(inaudible).
And disturbance. So there doesn't seem to be any major issues there. The only thing that is still outstanding is the fire marshal's approval. We did get your letter, thank you for that, of your sprinkler system. So we will not be able to vote on your license tonight, but we do have a meeting on June 25. So that's the day that they inspect it and will vote on your liquor license that night after we get a letter from the fire marshal stating that your system's up and running because it was supposed to be done by January. So as soon as the fire marshal clears it, then we'll have the meeting to sign the liquor license.
Did you see his letter?
We did. It said he's going to do a final inspection on June 25.
Yeah, I'm actually waiting on that.
Yeah, and once he signs, once he gets it, if you can get us a letter that day, then that's the only issue that's on the table for us, then we can, then we can vote and sign your application that night.
Do you have an issue with, like, a vote with the state with something?
Oh, yeah, well, if they, you can let them know, you can let them know that we're just told, we had the hearing, we have no issues other than the fire marshal's approval, which will be coming on June 25, and they will let you continue to operate until that time. Because you expire the 31st, correct?
No, the 4th.
The 4th of June? Yeah. And if they need something from us, have them, have them let us know, and we can send them a letter. Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Our fire chief is going to be there that same day when they do the inspection as well, so we'll get notified right off, so.
Yeah, so if you can get us, you know, get a, get a letter into us here that day, that night at seven o'clock, we'll, we'll have it on that agenda that night. Okay? All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Commercial hauler's permit.
We got to come out of public hearing?
Oops, I'm sorry. A motion to come out of public hearing.
I move that we come out of public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay. Commercial haul, commercial hauler's permit. We had some changes to the transfer station ordinance that were on the school warrant, and it passed, so we have a new form. Application for commercial hauler's permit. Applicant's name, applicant's mailing address, applicant's telephone number. Applicant agrees that upon approval of a permit, he or she shall comply with all provisions set forth in the town of Acton Solid Waste Ordinance as amended on April 28, 2015. Upon approval, applicant agrees to provide the town with an up-to-date list of all customers he or she is providing hauling services for in the town of Acton. If approved, the permit shall expire annually on June 30. Applicant's signature, non-refundable application fee, $25. Application fee received, permit fee due upon approval, $250. Permit fee received. Application approval, approved, denied, and the date, and then signatures of the three selectmen. A motion on the application for commercial hauler's permit.
I move that we approve the application for the commercial hauler's permit.
Seconded.
All in favor? You have your form, Bob.
I have mine.
All ready?
I've got mine.
Okay. You can start using it.
Okay.
Sand and Salt RFP.
Loan.
Okay.
It's a brief synopsis on the topic.
Okay. Um, the R F P for the Sand and Salt Building, amount to be determined by awarded bid but not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Term, ten years. Interest rate, not to exceed four percent. Bill due date, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. A motion on the going out for a, um, loan R F P for the Sand and Salt Building.
I make, I make a motion that we go out for the R F P for the Sand Salt Building.
Sogga.
Discussion. All we're doing is, it takes sixty days, um, for banks to get back to us, so we're going out to bid for the loan.